Hello and welcome to the, geez, what's the date today? The September 13th School Committee Meeting. Thank you for joining us. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Our first order of business is approval of items by consensus. I'll start with the approval of minutes from our August 30th regular session. Do I have a motion to approve? All right, do I have a second? Tom? All those in favor? Unanimous? All right, and we are going to, we're going to take this item out of order to, in respect for our young people who are coming to provide a presentation. Paul, do you want to introduce this? Student presentation, yeah.
Yes. We have a student presentation, North Star Award winner Kayla Kelly.
Hi there, I'm Christine McBeniman. I'm the principal at the North Intermediate School. And we wanted to make everyone aware in a celebration of our successes here in Wilmington. And we wanted to let you know that last year, we as a North leadership team began a new award, a new tradition at the North entitled the North Star Award. And the criteria for this award that the teachers all voted on, the entire staff, is a student who best exemplifies the following attributes: leadership, kindness, respect, commitment to learning, and responsibility. So I am proud to announce that our Renaissance woman, Kyla Kelly, a poet, a writer, a musician, and an all-around kind and humble young woman, is the first recipient of our North Star Award. And this plaque now hangs in the North lobby, and she is the first recipient. All of the students and our entire school community can pass this in the hallway as they head up and down the hallways. And next year, in the spring of 2015, 2018, at our Moving Up Day ceremony, we'll have a new name that will go on this award. So I would like to introduce to you Kyla Kelly, and she's going to show you her own North Star Award that she was able to take with her.
So it says, "North Star Award, Kyla Kelly, 2017." And I just want to say that I really enjoyed my time at the North.
Well, we enjoyed having you. And we were sorry to let you go, but we're so proud of you heading off to the sixth grade at the Wilmington Middle School. She's going to be a great leader. And so I'm just so proud of her and proud of the North for establishing this award. And I thought I would pass around her letter and the plaque so you all can get a good look at what she was deserving of. Okay? Congratulations.
It's a wonderful program, Christine. Thank you very much. And congratulations, Kyla. Does the board have any comments? Yes.
I'd just like to echo that. What a wonderful new tradition to start at the North. I think it's wonderful and wish you the best of luck and look forward to next year's.
Futures.
Yes, the future natties.
Congratulations once again. That's wonderful. Kindness, respect, commitment to learning, responsibility, and leadership. Those are wonderful qualities. Parents must be very proud.
I did forget to introduce, I'm sorry. The important people. Tom and Crystal Kelly are here supporting their daughter and Brother Griffin. I apologize.
And Brother Griffin, is it? Griffin, what grade are you in?
Second.
Second? All right, so you've got a couple of years before you have to live up to that. We thank you very much for coming. I'm sure you may have homework. Don't feel like you have to stay for the entire meeting. Thank you again. All right. We'll move on to our student representative report. We're welcoming a new student representative this year. Joe, why don't you introduce yourself to the committee and to the public and let us know what you have to say tonight.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Joe Wilson, and I'm a junior here at Wilmington High School. For this week's meeting on Wednesday, September 13th, school is starting to get back into swing after the summer off. On August 27th, we had our freshman orientation here at the high school. Freshmen were welcome, along with their parents and our mentors here. We have a mentor program at the high school, and each freshman was paired with a mentor. Our goal was to make their transition from middle school to high school as easy and painless as possible, because we all know coming to the high school from eighth grade is a very big transition. We just wanted to make it comfortable for them. On September 21st of, on September 21st, we have an activities fair during our W-2 that is geared towards freshmen so they can come down and take a look at all of our clubs that we have here at the high school. DECA this week, last week, has been selling assignment notebooks to students and parents. We sold them at all lunches throughout last week and the parent-teacher night. We're doing that so students can remember their assignments, and they have a place to write them down, so that way they're not, the night before, losing track of what they had to do. WHS Lamp Lighters Drama Guild has started their casting and production of their show, Rumors. That will be on November 17th and 18th. I've heard it's a pretty good show. I've heard it's a funny production, and I'm looking forward to going to see that. As we all know, this Monday was the anniversary of September 11th. The WHS September 11th Committee put together beautiful presentations that students could go see down in our cafeteria to commemorate 9/11 and to promote our theme of Wilmington Remembers. As we know, this tragedy should never be forgotten. All the brave men and women, civilians, law enforcement, fire personnel alike, lost their lives that day, and it should be commemorated and they should be remembered. They were able to view presentations on all three events: the Twin Towers in New York, the Pentagon, and the field in Shanksville, Pennsylvania. They were encouraged to go and reflect upon our memorial, which we have in the courtyard, and the piece of steel that is on display in the library. The steel was donated by retired FDNY firefighter Lee Ielpi in remembrance of his son Jonathan, who was also an FDNY firefighter. This Saturday, WHS will be holding its annual homecoming dance, Saturday evening. At lunch, nominations are being accepted for homecoming king and queen. We have two fundraisers that went on this week. One is a collection for the victims of Hurricane Harvey in Texas and Irma in Florida. And we had a, the 9/11 Committee had a fundraiser at the 99s, and those proceeds will be given to the men and women of the Wilmington Police Department. Last year, it was donated to the Wilmington Fire Department. And last but not least, this past week, Wilmington students had their first opportunity to show their school spirit at our first football game, where Wilmington demonstrated their whole new offensive line, and we beat out the Shawshin Tech.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions from the committee?
Yeah, just a quick question. Did you present to us last year for DECA, right?
Yes, sir, I did.
Well, it's nice to have you back.
Thank you.
Quick question. Did they take pictures of the 9/11 memorial and put up on the website, by any chance?
I'm not sure if they did. I know there has been, people have taken pictures of it before, and it has been around, especially when the memorial was new. I know they do this presentation every year. Every year that I've been here, I've seen it. And I'm not sure if they put any pictures of the memorial up.
Okay. Well, on the behalf of the board, welcome. Thank you. We're looking forward to working with you all year. Historically, the student representative, when you're done, you're more than welcome to the moose if you want. You can stay, you can, but you can, you're more than welcome to leave.
Thank you.
But thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is superintendent report.
Yes. I'd just like to mention to the board that today I attended a SEEM collaborative radar grant meeting. Nine SEEM collaborative districts are getting together. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has a grant program where either individual districts or collaboratives with the individual districts that belong to it can look at resource allocation to support best practices, such as inclusive practices and so forth. So we met today. There'll be a working group put together, and actually Alice Brown-Lagrande and Assistant Superintendent Gallagher will be part of that working group, along with many other members of those districts, to put together a, to actually write the grant and submit it. The grant's due in the middle of October, so I'll keep you informed on how that goes. There is some contract negotiations update we'll talk in executive session, but as you may be aware, we are currently negotiating with the Wilmington Teachers Association and our Cafeteria Association.
Okay. All right. Under new business?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can you just clarify this radar grant? Is this a federal grant or is it state grant or?
Department of Elementary and Secondary.
Oh, just Department, okay, I'm sorry.
That reminds me, I was remiss in asking, does anybody have any questions for the superintendent on his report? All right, saying none. Our next order of business, under all business, is our superintendent search. We have invited a couple of firms to provide us with presentations on their services tonight. Under full disclosure, I should say that I will have to abstain from voting on a search firm. I have a contract with MAS-C, a one-time contract, which could, could be a perceived conflict, so I'll abstain from that, from the vote tonight. Regardless of who is chosen, that won't infringe my ability to participate in the search. So, that being said, Julie, do you want to take over here?
I was just going to offer that at our last meeting on the 30th, we agreed as a full committee to have a subcommittee formed to review the four proposals that we received in response to our RFP for search firms. The members of the search committee were myself, Mrs. Bryson, and Mr. Mullis. We looked at the four proposals. After some discussion, we narrowed it down to two firms that we thought, for full transparency and to allow everyone a chance to ask questions of these two firms, that we would bring them in at our next public meeting. So we have invited MAS-C to come in and present to us. They were the firm that we used four years ago. We have also invited in NESDEC to also present to us their information as well. And I guess just in order of alphabetical order, we'll have MAS-C come in first. And Mrs. Bryson, since you're the one who, you reached out to NESC, do you want to just go grab Mike Gilbert?
I reached out to him.
I'm sorry, did I switch it? Okay, I'm getting the letters confused, that's fine. I can go grab him. Great. Mr. Gilbert is in the hallway. Perhaps we can have him come in and present first.
That is a good question. Good evening. So, we're here again to talk about a superintendent search. So MAS-C does superintendent searches around the state. We do anywhere from a third to a half of the searches around the state throughout the year. We're currently engaged in only a couple of searches at the moment, because it's early in the year. I think from the perspective that we bring to it, all of us who do searches for the School Committee Association have sat in your seat. We've been school committee members and been through searches as school committee members. So we come at this from that perspective. So we understand the process and we understand the needs of school committees as it relates to the search process. We work with you. We will design a search with you so that you have the search that you wish, and we will do whatever is necessary through the process. We are also, one of the things that I think is unique about us is we are there for you throughout the search. You know, we're your partner at the state level for other things as well. So one of the things we bring to the table is, we've been here to work with you before. We will be here to work with you after the search as well. And so we have somewhat of a stake in making sure that you do the job right and do it I don't know if you want to talk about process tonight or not, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
This may be an unfair question. I'm familiar with the process, having lived through it the last go-around. If this is an unfair question, please let me know. My question to you, in that time span, okay? I'd be interested in how many searches MAS-C have done approximately. Of those, how many in the first round was there not a superintendent hired? And then the second part to that, out of those that were hired, how many are still in their positions after three years? I think that's what I'm looking for, is longevity, and I think that's one of my personal views. Not that, you know, you can't predict the future.
Sure.
But I am looking for someone, I know there's a lot of shifting and there's a lot of people shopping. It's something that I'm not looking for in a candidate, per se.
Mm-hmm.
Not looking for, unless we can, you know, somebody who has a longevity in another district that is willing to make the jump. You know what I mean?
So if you want to know how many searches MAS-C has done?
Within the past couple of years.
Within the past few years?
Yeah.
Probably 25 to 30 searches in the last three to five years.
Could you tell me how many of those, in the first round, did not end up with a hire?
I don't recall any that did not end up with a hire.
Okay.
We've had that happen certainly at times. But I think that, you know, that is, that is on the, on the board as well. The issue of whether or not you hire somebody is whether or not that candidate that comes to you, those candidates, because you can't have just one.
Right.
Those candidates, it's whether or not they're a fit for your district.
Right.
And that's your decision.
Right.
So we try to bring you through the process, candidates that fit the profile that you've given to us. And when we do that, we basically have a two-tiered process. So usually you'll have a search committee that can do some of their work in executive session, talking to a larger group of candidates that, at least on paper, fit the profile. You, the search committee will then narrow that pool down to generally three to five individuals who become public candidates, finalists. You do due diligence on your part as a school committee to visit the places where those people work, to do reference checks and background information about those individuals, as well as asking them questions to sort of find that fit. And then you make that decision. If there's, if there isn't a candidate in those three to five that the school committee is comfortable with, then, yeah, we go out again and we do it over again. And the only, generally the only cost associated with doing it over again is advertising costs. If you do paid advertising. Now, I will tell you too that at this point, there is, there is not a lot of bang for the buck in paid advertising. So generally, our recommendations today are not to do paid advertising. We use the internet extensively to do advertising and do active recruiting.
So with this second part of that question, let's say, over the past three years, because typically, the average contract is a three-year.
Yep.
Of those hires within the past three years, how many are remaining?
I would say...
You know what I mean, going on to a second-year contract or, you know, moving on to another? I just want to, I think that...
In the last, I can only, I can only speak directly to the searches that I've done, all right, in the last three to five years, there's been one who didn't make the 30th.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. And I will also tell you that, you know, the average tenure of a superintendent is still less than five years. And, you know, a lot of it is based on where people are in their careers when they get to the superintendency. You're still looking at generally experienced administrators who are in their mid to late 50s and who are eligible, under Massachusetts law, to retire sometime between their 55th and 58th birthday. So they get their high three years as a superintendent, and they retire, and then they come back and do interim jobs. They call us six months later and say, "I'm bored. Give me another, give me another job."
Thank you very much, Mike.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So we used you four years ago, so we have the benefit, those of us that were on the committee then have the benefit of knowing the process a little bit more, but I think we're all cognizant that the employment market has changed in four years. It's a lot tighter than it was four years ago. So I'm going to ask this of both firms. What unique strategies do you employ that will help identify the top talent? We want, we want the cream of the crop and entice them to come to Wilmington. You mentioned active sourcing. What do you mean by that?
So it's interesting. I read a newspaper article that was in the, one of the local newspapers recently, and I will say this to you. Active recruiting in this business is very different than active recruiting in the private sector, because employees, administrators in the public sector have employment contracts. In the private sector, generally, they're employees at will. I can, as a headhunter, and I used to do this when I was a much younger person in the private sector, I could pick up the phone and I can call an executive in a company and talk to them and try to pull them away and recruit them. The only thing I would have to deal with is potentially maybe a non-compete agreement that might exist, but I don't have an employment contract. If I'm doing active recruiting in the public sector against a, a, a employment contract, there's a little thing called torturous interference with a contract. Okay? I can't pick up the phone and say to a particular individual, "I want to negotiate with you to come to this district." The other piece of that is, I work for the School Committee Association. You're our members, okay? How would you feel if I placed a superintendent here and then a year later picked up the phone and called and recruited them away? Okay? We do have strategies to actively recruit, so we do a lot of it is, I would call it passive processes in terms of making sure that we put the positions in front of every superintendent, every assistant superintendent in the state of Massachusetts. We work with the Superintendents Association that now has a cadre of cohorts, multiple cohorts, of aspiring superintendents, so we know who the, who the people are who are actually aspiring to these positions. We generally are involved with other organizations where superintendents may be present, and I can certainly say to superintendents in a group setting, you know, Wilmington's open. You might want to think about whether or not this is the place you want to be. Those kinds of things I can do. Okay? The sort of headhunter role, you can't. It just, you, there's too much potential liability, both for you as a school committee and for our, for our company as well.
Great, thank you.
Okay. The other piece of that, we are part of a national network, the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers. Basically, every state school board association that does searches, we will actively work with our partners in other states to find candidates that fit the profiles. We will send the profiles and the, and the materials for the search to our counterparts in those other states. In, given potentially timing, at the AASA conference, the NASS Group is a part of a job, job fair at the National Superintendents Conference. So, you know, we use that as a tool as well. So that helps us from two places. It helps us in terms of putting your position in front of potential candidates. It also helps us from the perspective, is if we get a candidate from another state, I know my counterpart in that state. I can pick up the phone and call them and say, "What do you know about this candidate? Why are they looking? What's their, you know, what's their, what's their real profile?" And get information that other people can't.
Great, thanks.
So last year, we started a search, and we started a little bit late because of the timing. And we did get a lot of resumes, but the pool of employees wasn't what we were expecting, so we ended that search. I guess my question to you is, how do you see the landscape? How many openings are there? Are we, where are we timing-wise?
So this is interesting. Timing-wise, you're sort of right on the cusp of the beginning of the process. There are a couple of searches going on right now statewide. We're aware of a number of others that are coming down the pike, but many of them have not really begun. I just picked up the search, I'll be doing a search in Woburn. And, and so that will be one that will probably start within the next six to eight weeks. The other interesting piece is, I think you're well-positioned as the profile of your community and your school district is different than the types of communities I'm seeing that may be open this year. Some of the small cities are places where we're seeing, like Woburn, like Haverhill, where there will be superintendencies open. Different candidate is going to be looking at Haverhill and Woburn than will be looking at Wilmington. So from that perspective, I don't see a number of school districts, especially in the area, in the general area where your competitors are, where you might draw somebody from. I don't see any of those sort of interfering with your candidate pool.
Thanks.
Can I go?
Yep.
One question. Can you tell us a little bit about the analysis of the district needs and goals and how, I wasn't a part of this process last time.
Sure.
So can you, I think it'd be helpful for everyone to hear. What does that look like? And then I'd also like to ask about the screening committee. So sort of, how do we analyze what we need, and then how do we develop the screening committee?
So generally, the way we try to do this process is, we will hold focus groups in the, in the community. We have found that focus group, focus groups by themselves are not a optimum tool, because people are very busy, and so the community members who might have an interest oftentimes forget that that's, that there's a focus group, or they choose not to be in a position where they want to stand up and talk about, about this with, with others. So the other thing we do is we put together a survey, an online survey. We generally get a significant response to the online survey, both from staff and from parents. The way we do the focus groups, we will come in and meet with faculty as, we'll schedule, usually what we do is we try to schedule a meeting in every building. I know you have multiple buildings, and sometimes, you know, I think the last time we did it, we doubled up a couple of the buildings. But we give opportunities generally after school lets out. I will come in and meet with staff and basically let them tell me, what is it that you're looking for? What are the skills and qualities that you're looking for in your next superintendent? What are the issues that this district is going to face over the next three to five years that that person's going to have to come in and deal with immediately? We take the results of the focus groups, and we sort of meld those with the surveys. We will also do focus groups for parents and community members in... We will also do focus groups for parents and community members in the evening because we know that that's, that generally, certainly during the day isn't a good time for, for them. But we'll do it in the evening, we also tell faculty that, you know, if you can't make an afternoon meeting, come, come to the parent one and they're the, and we try to have at least one completely open to, to anybody in the community. So from that perspective, we're gathering data from a lot of places. We have sort of a standard survey that looks at a standard set of skills and qualities, but will give you the opportunity to delete from that or add to it. If, if there's something in particular that your district has a strength in or, or you're looking for something in particular, we'll ask you that as a board to, we'll give you the survey ahead of time, say, "Edit this, tell us what, what, what you want to add" or "What doesn't have any, any meaning to you?" We then take that, meld it, we bring the report back to you. We will make a recommendation as to sort of what are the top 10 items that would develop into a candidate profile. And, and that's what we use to do at least initial paper screening. We rate, we will rate the paper that's given to us by candidates against those criteria. We look at their application, we look at their resume, we look at their letters of reference, we look at their college transcripts. So that it's not just about their background, it's about their personal profile. And we've, over the years, I've been doing this for 20 years, so I've gotten very good at reading between the lines, especially in letters of reference and personal statements. So generally, we do the paper screening, we then bring to the search committee five to 10, eight to 10 candidates for the search committee to interview. We have a set of questions that are generally designed to get at the standard criteria. So we will look at, with the search committee, we will look at those questions. We may develop other ones, I have gotten some of my best questions for our database from search committees I've worked with. So, again, we're not married to all of those questions, but they provide a base for the search committee to conduct interviews. They use the same questions for each interview, so we've got a base that they're looking at, again, based on the criteria that you've set forward as a board. And their role is to narrow that group from eight to 10 to three to five. Then it comes to the school committee, at this point, we've got three to five candidates that on paper and through an interview process have been able to articulate that they meet the criteria that you're looking for. So now it's about two things, it's about fit and, and really figuring out how is that person really going to work in our district? And all of, I do all of the things that they've said and written jive with what we're seeing. It's why I think, you know, one of the things we try to do is have you do those site visits prior to the interview. So you, those, those site visits can inform your questions of candidates at the public interviews. We don't give you, we, we do, we will give you the questions that are asked by the search committee and we'll give you some materials to help you develop questions. But generally, I don't have, I don't develop questions for school committees because I think that they have enough information, they have all of the information they're going to need to make that decision. So the questions really come from their, your, your individual experience through meeting the candidates, doing those site visits, and the materials that we provide to you. One of the things we also want to do is, because these are public interviews, we want to be fair to candidates. So if you're sitting at a public meeting developing questions, candidates are watching on TV, they know what the questions are ahead of time, it's, it's not as helpful to either the candidates or the board. So that's another reason why I say to the school committee, you know, everybody develop your own three to five questions. That way if one of your questions get asked, you've got another one. And in an hour interview, generally even with seven people, you can't ask more than a couple of questions during that timeframe.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a follow-up.
Yep.
Access to materials, will we have access to everything from the get-go? So every resume that comes in, are we able to see all of that? What's the recommend, what do you do, what's the recommendation?
So there are, there are, there are privacy and confidentiality issues there. So, as a school committee, until the, until the process gets to the final stage, because we're doing some of this in executive session, you're not. Because you're not privy to some of that information. The search committee is, they may see all of them, if they choose to do that. I've done, I've done it that way. The problem is it depends on how many applications you get. And if, I, I did this once with a, a district that had 45 applicants. Trying to, to do a paper screening in a, in a committee of 15 people with 45 applications, can you see where the spreadsheet sort of goes in terms of trying to figure out who's, who becomes an issue? When we do the paper screening in our office and narrow down the pool, we use three people, we never use just one. And we, again, we use your criteria. Candidates don't want to apply if they think their confidentiality is going to be breached before they get to the final stage. And so they look at the process as well to see, how is the process going to go and who's going to have access to my information before, before I get to be a finalist? So you want the deeper pool and, and the more rigorous pool. We, we try to, we try to maintain that confidentiality in such a fashion that you're going to get the best pool that you can of candidates. Now that being said, if that's what you want, we'll talk to the lawyers and we'll find a way to do it. But one of the issues we have right now with the Attorney General's Office on this issue is, if a majority of the school committee is involved in any portion of the screening, it has to be done in public. If a majority of the school committee is on the search committee, everything has to be public. So it becomes a, it becomes an issue.
Which would be four of us or-
Yes.
But if we had less, a subcommittee of sorts.
Yes, yep. But it can't be just school committee members, in other words, you can't say-
No, of course.
The screening committee is three members of the school committee, that doesn't work. Yes?
I just wanted to make a, a point of something that you just said about reviewing and developing questions in public. If those of you that, that followed this four years ago, you'll remember that we actually did utilize WCTV's services and we recorded each one of the final interviews. But in the first two scheduled final interviews, we did not have WCTV show those live.
Right.
And there's a reason for that, I think there were some people that were a little concerned about, why did we do that? Got to make it fair for everyone.
It's a fairness, it's a fairness for the candidates.
It's a fairness issue, and I think also flash forward four years with live streaming and the use of social media, live tweeting, we're need, we're going to need to think about that. Sorry to put you on the spot, but it is what it is. I think we're going to need to think about how we make it fair-
Yep.
-as we move forward in the process and how we're still following the law as we move forward in the process.
Yes. From a, from a legal perspective, you know, the, the, the live tweeting by press or by the public, there's not a lot you can do about that. But in terms of making it as fair as possible, I think what we generally try to do is not, we want the community to understand how you made your decision. So recording those interviews and showing them later-
Yep.
-does that. But the, the process, especially in terms of, you know, I'd have a conversation with members of the press to say, "Don't live tweet the questions because-"
Right.
You know, "We want to be fair to everybody," but beyond that, all you can do is ask. And one of the issues I always have now is, the, you know, once the selection is made, in, in the old days, I'd get the phone out, I'd call the candidate that got the job and say, and hand the phone to the chair and say, "Tell them." These days, they know before I hand the phone.
Yeah, and it goes the other way, the folks that didn't get the job also know before.
That, that makes my job easier because I'm the one who has to call the ones who didn't get the job. Manny?
I have a question, go back to something you had said that-
Sure.
-you feel is important to the site visits. Why do you feel that, that that's an important part of the search? I, I found it to be, be in part of this search last time.
Yep.
I found the site visits to be somewhat staged. And I also found that because we broke up in different groups, we tended, the, the group that had gone to that certain site tended to have a bias towards that particular candidate. So, do you recommend that we all go? And also, what is it that, about the site visits that is so important and-
I, I think because you get to see the candidate in, in, in their environment, in the environment where they, where they work, okay? You will often hear things either from the candidate themselves or from the, the people you're talking to. I mean, you're right, a, a good portion of those site visits are staged because you've asked to see certain types of people and, and you're going to, you're going to get the best people from the candidates that you can. One of the things I think I said to you then, and I will say to you again if I do it again, is, "Go find a local coffee shop as part of the, part of the visit, go find a local coffee shop and sit there and grab a couple of people that aren't part of the staged piece and ask them to." But I have seen more candidates blow their chances by an inadvertent remark walking down the hallway at a site visit. I've also seen them do the opposite, I've also seen somebody pick up something that, "Oh my goodness, if we do this in our district, this is going to be the best thing since sliced bread." So, the bias can go both ways, okay? In your case, I, you know, I don't, I don't know, I didn't catch any of that from the conversations I heard as part of that search, but, you know, I've seen it, I've seen that bias go both ways.
A little bit just looking back into the process from-
Sure.
-four years ago.
Yeah.
So that's, that was part of my question, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any further questions? Mike, thank you very, very much for your presentation. No problem, thanks a lot, I look forward to hearing from you. Either way.
That would be lovely, thank you.
Welcome.
Who are you?
If you would join us at that microphone, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Would you like me to begin with a introductory statement or, okay, okay. Well first of all, my name is Art Betancourt. I'm the Executive Director of the New England School Development Council. The New England School Development Council is a not-for-profit organization, we're headquartered in Marlboro, Massachusetts. We originally founded at the Harvard Graduate School of Education in 1946, don't hold that against us, we're no longer affiliated with Harvard. We have been in business for over 70 years. As, just a little bit about myself, I'm a former superintendent of schools in Massachusetts for over 20 years. Prior to that, I was a building principal and before that, a teacher, which seems like 100 years ago in Newton, Mass. I'm here this evening representing Nesdeck, the, the partner or the other search consultant that I would recommend who would be working with me on this search should you choose to engage Nesdeck, is Dr. Carolyn Burke. I frequently work with her on, on searches. And typically Nesdeck provides a search team rather than an individual search consultant that gives you more access to our services and ensures that there's someone who can help you if in fact, one of them is, is out of the area or, or not able to be contacted. Carolyn is a former administrator in Framingham, Mass. And she actually worked for Nesdeck, has been working for Nesdeck longer than I have. And she's done a, a large number of searches, so it would be a search team, as I mentioned, in place for you should you engage us for your services. Nesdeck is a comprehensive services organization and we're unique in a couple of ways. First of all, our, our, our catchment area is New England, that is all we do. We, although we have national recognition and we receive RFPs and RFQs from all over the country, all of our work is focused on the New England states. I have a Board of Directors, an 18-member Board of Directors and that Board of Directors is made up of superintendents from each of the New England states. So our ability to recruit and contact and be in touch with people and be in the field in New England is, is unsurpassed. But beyond that, I believe is unsurpassed. Beyond that, we are a member of the National School Development Council. The National Council is a, an organization of consulting agencies like ourselves, nonprofits, many of them associated with colleges and universities. Lehigh, for example, University of Albany, there are a number of them. And we collaborate in terms of our recruiting, recruiting efforts so that we have a nationwide recruiting ability as well. Virtually every search we do, every search that Nesdeck does is a national search. We don't distinguish between a state search or a regional search or a national search because we're so well-known, virtually every search we do is a national search. As a comprehensive organization, we're in schools all the time and we do a lot more than, than, than executive searches. We do a lot of planning work, demography, enrollment projections, special ed audits, those sorts of things. We do a lot of professional development at all levels of school districts for, for teachers, support staff, board members. We have a legal section, we do a lot of work in Title IX and civil rights. And we have a research and development section as well, which works on innovative projects and, and frequently funded by grants. The reason I'm here this evening is to talk to you about our executive search program. Our executive search program, I think, is pretty well-known, very well-known in fact, and we've done well over 500 executive searches. In fact, the number I think eclipses at this point 600, we try not to exaggerate it, it's, it's certainly 500 and, and a lot more. And those searches are done in each of the New England states. Each year we do somewhere between, I'd say 12 and 20 searches a year. We have roughly eight search consultants that work around New England and we keep those consultants very busy and we're very pleased to do that. Something I think that's very important to, to keep in mind about us is we consider every search a unique design. So although I've given you a proposal which has a fairly typical design for a comprehensive search, we work really hard to design a search around your needs because every school and every school district rather and every community is a little different. So the very first thing we would do is sit down with you and we would map out what your search will look like. And then we would create a calendar of events and who's responsible for each of the elements of the search. And in a, in addition to that, we, we work very hard to ensure that you have confidence in our search. And the way we do that is by, is by offering you a warranty. We were the first to do this and now you'll find a lot of, a lot of search companies have picked it up. But we offer you a warranty, first of all, that as we do your search, we will be with you to do your search until it's done. Which means if we go out for a round of, to develop an applicant pool and we go through the process of interviewing folks in that applicant pool and it doesn't work out, we'll go out and do it again. And we'll do it until you get the person that you think is right for your, your district. The other thing that we do is we offer you a two-year warranty on the search. It sounds kind of strange, but it is a two-year warranty on the search. If your superintendent, chosen as a result of our search, is for some reason leaves other than retirement or for another position in the district or in the municipality over a two-year period, we will come in and do the search on a one-time basis, we will do the search over again for you for no fee, just the expenses. So we feel that by giving you some confidence in our ability to work with you and giving you confidence in the long run, that's a help to you in terms of moving forward and, and doing a good job for you. Now you've already talked to Michael, who I've known for years and who is a very good guy and who represents an excellent firm, MAS C. So rather than my going on, perhaps what you would like to do is to ask me questions that might guide me to the areas that you'd like to, to talk about, does that make sense? MJ?
I was going to ask you the same question I asked Mike and I may, if nobody else has any, I want to be wary of the time. You say note that if, after two years the placement leaves, you'll do the search one time without a fee, but there'll be- you'll do the search one time without a fee, but there'll be expenses. What are those expenses would be incurred?
Actually, if you look at our, we may be somewhat unique in this respect too. If you look at our proposal, our expenses are fixed. We don't do rolling expenses. So, when you contract with us, we know about what the expenses are going to cost for a search like yours based upon the scope that I've written for you in that search. So, in this particular search, I believe the expenses are 2960, am I right? Is that what they are for you?
But when you say expenses, are you meaning ads? The advertisement for the second search?
The advertisement, well, we'll do some advertising for you, which is included in the proposal. In addition to that, we offer the opportunity to do optional advertising at cost. All we do is pass through the cost to the school committee. And that advertising is done only if you want it. Most of our outreach now, in terms of quote "advertising," is done electronically.
Right.
So, many districts just use the package that's included, which includes an electronic outreach, actually several times during the search.
Okay, so the expenses that would be in addition, are you talking, are they travel?
Yeah.
Consultant time would be the?
Consultant time is the?
Would be included, right, okay.
So, to make it specific, if the, I can't recall the exact number in your proposal.
No, I wasn't looking towards the number per se as much as to what, if we had to go through it again, what expenses would not be included?
Just those expenses for travel, printing, telephone.
Okay.
And it's, I would just iterate again, it's a fixed expense. That is the number. That number does not roll. We do not send you monthly expenses. That is the number. So, you know upfront what you're going to pay.
And within that flat fee, as we go through this process, are your services, is that price included to where we go through, let's say, the initial search to whittle down the final candidates, the focus groups, that whole process, the final? Is that all like onsite?
It's all fixed.
Right, but I'm saying, but you're onsite for each and every one of those?
It'll probably be Dr. Burke and me.
Right.
If there's some reason why one of us can't make it, it would be one of the other.
I just want to ensure.
So, the comprehensive search includes all of those services that are in that packet, including the electronic outreach. If you want to do additional advertisements, we have a list of things there that are optional that you can do if you wish and we can recommend some that work better than others. But the fact of the matter is, most of our outreach is electronic. Or, the other piece of this is recruiting, which we do heavily. And recruiting is face-to-face. In my office, we do the recruiting out of headquarters or over the telephone or Skype or something like that. But all of that is included for the fee and the expenses that we've quoted.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Julie.
Thank you. I guess we're, part of our discussion this evening is we need to weigh the two firms that we're considering, right? The pros and the cons. So, I guess what I am curious to hear about are, what are the unique strategies that your firm uses to help us identify the top talent? And how do you entice them to come to Wilmington?
Okay, well, first of all, let me say that in answering this question, I think MASCE is a fine firm, I really do. And I've known Michael for years. So, having put that out there, I will tell you that I think what makes us unique is first of all, something I mentioned earlier, which is New England footprint. We don't serve a single state. We serve all of the New England states. And therefore, we're doing work in all of the New England states all the time. And as I mentioned to you, my Board of Directors is made up of superintendents from each of the New England states, in addition to the contacts that we've developed in each of the New England states. So, that gives us a very good, I think, in terms of recruiting and understanding who's out there in New England, I don't think there's anyone who really can compare with us in that regard. And that's all proprietary. We don't rely on anyone else but ourselves for that because we have the capacity to be out in all of the states and know what's going on and who's available. In addition to that, we have the national group and we recruit through the national group. I'm on the Board of Directors of the national group and in fact, serve as the Executive Director of the National School Development Council as well. So, we have, and in particularly, we have a very strong presence in New York, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania because those are really good recruiting grounds for New England. They represent, in many ways, similar cultures to New England. Also, the proximity so that you don't have the person coming in from the West Coast, although we can recruit that far if that be the case and we certainly have candidates that may end up in your search that come from all over the country. The other thing that's unique about us is that we don't advocate for school committees. We don't advocate for superintendents. We don't advocate for teachers. We don't get into any of the, sort of the quasi-political things that other organizations might be putting resources to. Our resources, all of our resources, go to the projects that we do for our clients. That's our focus. So, we don't owe the Superintendents Association anything. We don't owe the School Committee Association anything. We don't owe any of the teachers' unions anything. We have none of those connections. We're completely objective. And by being completely objective, we can focus on what your needs are. And we can look at candidates and say, well, you know, candidate A, he's a nice person and we've known him for a long time. But by the way, this candidate, looking at it objectively, is one we might focus on or help you focus on. So, I think all of those things make us unique. Can I answer your question further and follow it?
Nope, I'm fine, thank you.
Tom.
So, how many have you had to do the free round for? That they left before the two years?
I don't have a hard number. It's probably, you know, every couple of years. We've probably done two or three in the last five or six years. And we don't consider, the other piece of this that I think is important for me to convey is, if you don't find the right person in your first round, that's not a failure. That means you're doing your job. That means that you're looking at candidates and you're scrutinizing them carefully and you're saying, this particular group, although they're all fine people, this particular group of people is not right for us. So, we need to keep searching. That's not a failure. And so, we go about it by saying, the goal is to get the right person. And we'll go to great lengths and spend a great deal of time with that process to ensure that that happens. Answer your question?
Manny.
Couple of quick questions. You talk about staying through the process that we hire them. Do you also get involved with the contract negotiations?
We don't usually, what we can do is we can advise you as to the contract stipulations that you want to be wary of or that you want to focus upon. We can advise you comprehensively and we have an attorney that works with our office. Usually what happens is either your attorney will take over at that point or we will work with your attorney in terms of providing background. But typically, municipal attorneys are well-versed in the contract and most school committees feel comfortable. But we can talk about that.
Okay. And then the other question I asked Mr. Gil, the same thing. Why do you see the landscape as far as not only the openings for superintendent but the pool of candidates and our timing?
Your timing is fine. And if you were to begin a search fairly soon, you would probably, assuming that all goes well, you'd probably finish up your search February, March. And if you did that, you would be in a position where, if the person coming in is a practicing superintendent or even assistant superintendent, they'd be able to meet their contractual obligations with their present employer. It's typically a 60 or 90 or 120-day period, separation period. The other thing that, if you did it in that timeframe, and maybe even sooner, maybe even February, assuming you want to fill the position in July or May, you'd have a transition period where that person could come into the district, could meet with people, could become familiar with your policies and your procedures, and could then, you know, take over on the date that you wanted he or she to take over. So, it's a good time. As for the pool, being a superintendent today is a hard job. And the demands are many. And it's not just about, although as a superintendent of schools, you so want to concentrate on the kids and what's going on in the classroom. There are a lot of distractions and a lot of them are political, money, all of those things. And so, it's a very demanding job. So, the applicant pool is shallow, I will say that. We've been fortunate however, that in an applicant pool, you can find people with the right fit. And by the way, you know, an applicant pool of 20, 30, 40 people, all of those people deserve credit for putting their hat in the ring. They're all quality people for that reason. I think the trick is to find the one person or the two or three people that you can consider that have the attributes, the experience, the kinds of things that you need for your district to maintain itself and move forward. Someone who feels comfortable in your community and someone that you feel comfortable with in your community. I can tell you a couple of things about what candidates look for when they look for a position. Because you have your standards, but candidates also have theirs. We ask our candidates, what is it you look for when you look at a position? The number-one thing that candidates will tell us is, I want to be sure it's a school committee or a board that I can work with. I want to be sure that people are reasonable, that they listen, that they know how to plan, they know how to compromise. And as we go forward, they know their role. They know my role and they know theirs. That's number one. Number two is the quality of life for me and my family. Am I going to a place where I can also take care of my family, provide my family with the kinds of experiences, the kinds of enrichment that they need as I take on this position? And then the third is money. But it's interesting that the top two things are not the monetary piece. It's the relationship. And I think that's really important. And the other thing I will say in that realm is that there are a lot of very smart administrators who are applying for administrative positions. Very smart, very accomplished. And that's good. And they know a lot about education, they know a lot about kids. But in the end, there's a relationship between a superintendent and a board, school committee, and a community that's very important. And that relationship almost always comes above everything else. Because if the person is trying to be fair, do the right thing, be accessible, be honest, that's the kind of person that typically comes into a district and uses all of those skills and all of that experience to do a good job for you.
Thank you.
Jim.
Can you tell us a little bit about the process for identifying our district needs and goals? What sorts of things are we going to do when we get started to figure out what we're looking for?
Sure, well, that's actually one of the things we would talk with you about right up front if you were to engage us. As I said, the proposal I gave you is a template. And I think what we would want to do is sit down with you and really talk about how you wanted this to flow. Typically, what we do is we have a proprietary survey instrument which works very well. So, we would make that available to you if you wished. In addition to that, and I've built into your proposal, I think it's six focus groups. And we would work with you in terms of what constituencies you would like to invite to those focus groups. In addition to that, we offered you the opportunity for both, in this case, Carolyn or myself, to come into the community and interview stakeholders that you point out to us. For example, you might want us to interview your chief of police. You might want us to interview other municipal officials. After we've accumulated all of that data, what we do is we arrange that data in a format that's, I think, somewhat easy to understand. It's organized for you so that you can see it and we hope that it makes sense to you. We would then give you that data in written form. It's about, tends to be 20 or 30 or 40 pages long. And we would provide, if you asked for them, our perceptions of what people are telling us. But we would then go through a process of actually sitting down with you and saying, okay, what does all this data say to you? And then we would work through with you what the attributes, characteristics, experiences are that you're looking for in a superintendent. Those would then be developed into what we call a candidate profile, which is a bulleted list, usually one, two pages, which condenses your thoughts as a school committee after you have looked at the data and after we have facilitated a conversation with you around that data and what we all think it means. That candidate profile is made available to candidates that we recruit, for example. It also is something that typically resides on your website. So, even before a candidate talks to us, they might be looking at that saying, ah, this is a position that I think fits, that I fit or that my experience and expertise fit. And so, that's the piece in terms of sort of clarifying your needs as a school committee and as a community. And then using that profile, and in fact, the entire instrument, if you choose to put a screening committee together, which most school committees in Massachusetts do, we would use that profile to direct the screening committee in terms of what they should be looking for in your applicant pool. And then using those attributes that you have come up with, we'd work with the screening committee to determine a number of candidates that they wanted to come in for an interview. And then based upon those interviews and help from us in terms of facilitating the conversation, those 10, 12 candidates that they interview, however many they are, would be narrowed down to whatever number the school committee gave us. Three, four, five. Those three, four, or five candidates, we would then talk to intensively about how really, are you really interested in this position? What are your requirements? And as long as we think there's an alignment between their requirements and your expectations, then we move forward with those candidates as finalists. The screening committee, as you probably know this, the screening committee piece of this is done in executive session. But once those finalists are named, it becomes a public process and those finalists are named publicly and your conversations with those finalists are all done in public, except for contract negotiations, things like that. Did that answer your question?
It does. And so, the access to them, will we have access to the materials and does the screening committee have access to everything that comes in?
Yep.
Or do they just get a piece of it?
Nope.
The whole thing?
Now, some search firms will do that. Some search firms will tell you that they will cull down the candidates and provide you with the seven or eight that they think you should be looking at. We do not do it that way. I mean, that's a, that is a way to expedite the process, but we don't. We take all of the applications. We try to get those applications into us completed. We will even pass on applications that aren't totally complete if we think there's something in there for people to look at. All of those applications are provided to the screening committee. The screening committee reviews all of those applications, has a facilitated conversation with us that goes over actually two nights, sometimes three, where we cull down the list of, let's say, 40 candidates to 10 or 12 that they are seriously interested in looking at. And then we go through the interview process. School committees can have access, school committee members, I should say, can have access to all of the applications, but there's a caveat. And you would want to check with your own attorney to be sure that he or she is in agreement with this. But the caveat is, you can have access to all of the applications, but you may not discuss them. You may not share between, even when you're not meeting, may not share between you any of the information in the applications. And if you bring a name forward that hasn't been brought forward by the screening committee, that name immediately becomes public.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Yes, MJ.
How many searches in the past five, six years have been for Massachusetts superintendents?
Oh.
Just a ballpark.
In the past four or five years?
Yeah.
Let's say in the past five years. Got to be 50 anyway, maybe more.
Okay. Do you know, because that's a larger number, how many of those hires are still in their present positions?
I do, 49.
Thank you.
If it's 50, it's 49. There's one that we did two years ago in a district out west that did not work.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, we thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for inviting me and I wish you well. Regardless of who you choose, I hope it goes well for you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're appreciated. Okay, now would be open to discussion. If the committee wishes to discuss any aspects of those presentations. Manny.
I thought they both presented well. We have a lot of information to go through. I think we should kind of take that in as a committee and look at our options before we go into any kind of vote.
All right. Does anybody have anything further?
Oh, make a comment. I too, having, like Julie, been experienced with MASCE services. I do find it very difficult, but I think I choose one for the other depending upon what way we want to see this next search go. They're not, there are some distinctive differences, which I think are refreshing. I'm thinking of the money aspect with, you know, throwing our net out. It's the additional expenses, which, you know, candidates coming in and interviewing and that, the end, you know, when we get into that interview process. I'd be interested in other people. I'd be interested in other people's thoughts with regards to that. I have to say, as much as I am comfortable with M A S E, I'm willing to take a risk by trying something new to see if that broadens our search, I guess is where I stand. I would like to crunch on it though, and kind of digest the presentation if, if someone, unless we're, we're planning on making that decision tonight.
Uh, that's the will of the committee. And I'm hearing two, two people say that they'd like to spend some time thinking this over. Is there any dissenting motion or? Jen, look like you've got something to say.
Well, I, you know, I feel like we've looked at this, we've all read through everything, we heard from them. If we wait, then that means it's
Two weeks.
Two, we can't do anything for two more weeks, which then just, I know we're still on the, we're in a good time right now, I know we're not running late, but I also worry that how much of this is going to change for us in the next, in the next week or two? And we're still gonna have to have the discussion about what we like about each of them and what we think they each bring to the table. I do feel a little bit badly that there's so many people here and this could take a long time. So that's the part of me that's like, ooh, that's a little hard, but I also feel like, do we want to wait two more weeks?
All right, here's what, here's what I think maybe perhaps we should do. I will say that four years ago, I think Julie reminded me tonight, that on the night we heard presentations, we, we took a vote. However, I don't think we want to rush this, nobody wants us to rush any of these decisions as long as we get it done on a timely basis. So I would accept a motion from somebody to, the motion could be either to vote tonight or not to vote tonight. MJ?
I would like to make a motion to table the vote until our next meeting so that we have, I, that's how I think. I would like to make a motion to table the, just the vote, the final vote until next meeting.
Do I have a second from, from Manny? All right, I know that I will be abstaining, so all those in favor of voting, tabling this till our next public session?
Can we discuss for one second?
Certainly, yep.
Can we possibly move through, can we sort of table it for a minute, move through the rest of the agenda and go back to it at, so mess up the agenda a little bit so that we can move ahead with everything else and then go back to it at the end, or can we not do that?
You mean go through the agenda and then have a discussion at the end?
Mm-hmm. In, open, in this meeting.
I mean, just, no, because we're discussing it now, so I'm assuming to vote on it at the end of the, the meeting.
I think that's, I think that's what
To vote on at the end of the meeting. But what I'm saying is, so not to get into the discussion right now, to move ahead.
But you want to have a discussion?
And a vote.
Right, and a vote. So we, we are not having a discussion right now. We're discussing whether to vote or not, but we're not, but we're not really discussing the, the two
Candidates.
Candidates. So I'm okay with that too, to speak, you know, as long as we have time and go, I, I feel terrible that all these people sitting here waiting.
Not that they're not highly interested in this discussion, I know they are, but
So I think we should go through the, the agenda. I think there's a lot to, but at the same time, there's a lot to kind of go through and discuss on the two, two groups to present.
All right. That being said, for parliamentary
Julie has her hand up. You know, it's hard to see, having sat in your seat. I guess, you know, this is, this is a tough call. I think we're all very concerned about making the right decision for this community. You know, if, if people feel the need that they need a little more time to think about it and not feel rushed in their decision, I, I personally don't think that two weeks will hurt us, as long as everyone is fully prepared that evening to make a decision that night and we commit to making a decision that night.
All right, I have, is there any further discussion? Because I do have a motion and a second, so we need to do one of two things. We either need to vote on that or MJ is the maker of the motion, you need to amend it or retract it. All right, so, yes. There's a motion and a second on the floor, so we do have to move in one way or another. We have to either take a vote on this, or you, you do have the privilege that you can retract your motion.
I'd like to move on it if we could.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of tabling for the next open session? I'm seeing four. All right, all those opposed? All right, and Peggy, you're abstaining? Okay, so four in favor of tabling, one opposed, two abstention. So we will, we'll take this up at our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting. All right. Our next order of business is always a wonderful point of business or early in the year. Paul, would you like to start with our introduction of new staff?
Sure. Thank you, everyone, for, for coming. We'll start this, I'll ask the principals to introduce their staff. We'll start with Kristen Walsh.
Good evening, so much for happening tonight. I would like to introduce two of your staff members that are here. One, unfortunately, was unable to attend. So I'd like to introduce our new school adjustment counselor. Her name is Carrie Fitch. She comes to us from the Lowell Community Charter School, and she serves the students at the Beltwell and the Wildwood Early Childhood Center. So welcome to, Carrie. Thank you.
Welcome.
I would also like to introduce Jacqueline Costello. She is our new kindergarten teacher, working with students in our stepping stone program. She comes to us from Shore Collaborative in Chelsea, so welcome to, Jacqueline. And our staff member that was unable to attend is Alexandra Perry. She's our new speech and language pathologist at the Beltwell, and she also splits her time with the Wilmington Middle School. So I'd like to just welcome Alexandra to our team as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. I should imagine Kristen's the director of the Beltwell Early Childhood Center. Next, Lisa King, principal of the Shawshene Elementary School. Is she, not here? Okay. I'll, I guess I'll introduce, is Lauren Cameron here? Well, she's the new long-term substitute, grade three teacher. Alina Jewitt, health teacher at the Shawshene. And Leah Labouf, speech and language pathologist at the, at the Shawshene. Next is Jeffia, unable to make it, Jeff Straznick. Kelsey Kovell, Woodman Street School Special Education Teacher. I know Christine's here, so Christine.
I have nobody to introduce, unfortunately, it hasn't already been with the district in some manner or another.
Dennis, principal of the Western Intermediate.
Hi, thanks, everybody. We have a couple of new people in the building this year that have been in town, but the first, the only person we have that's new to the district is Mrs. Krista Russo, right up here. She's a fourth grade teacher for us at the Western Intermediate School. She, she's new, but she's not because over the past five years, she's actually done three full years of maternity leaves in, in whatnot in the building over different periods of time. So we all know her very well, and we're thrilled to have her on the staff. And, and welcome, Kristen. Welcome.
Next, it'll be Kevin Welch, the interim principal at the middle school, and if we can just, we have a little bit of a list here, so if we hold our applause till the end of each one.
First of all, I'd like to announce Dan Fairclough, he's our new assistant principal at the middle school. (applause). She's our senior Antonio, she's a special ed science teacher. Dennis Mitchell, technology education. Andrew Hoffman's working in our language-based classrooms. Chris Benning is seventh grade learning center teacher. Sarah Rollins is a school psych. Kristin Romano is a reading specialist, and Kim Moncada is a school librarian, and Michael Ferrer, I'm not gonna forget you this time, he is a general music teacher.
Linda Peta is the principal of the high school.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to introduce Jonathan Bush. He's a math teacher, teaching freshmen at sophomores algebra and geometry. Very happy to have him, and someone that I can speak math with.
And Alice Ronald LeBran, director of student support services.
Great, thank you for having me. I have four new people. The first is Christine Murray, who's the coordinator for being real health and social emotional support in the district. Everybody knows Christine, she's been in the district quite a long time. The next is Andrew Pascal, who's our elementary district-wide, mostly working at the Shawshene and Beltwell School psychologist. So welcome, Andrew. The next is Dr. Jill Spiro, she's our district-wide B C V A, so she'll be working kind of throughout the entire district. And then the last is Ann Haskell, who's our team chairperson, new, kind of working at the West, the Beltwell, the Shawshene, and Ann has extensive experience in special ed. So they'll all be great additions.
And I'd like to introduce Mr. Frank Antonelli. He's the interim director of administration and finance. As you remember, he was appointed last week, so we welcome Frank. He, he's retired, he's recently worked in Lowell, Chelmsford, and most recently in the Groton Dunstable School District as an interim businessman.
Well, to all of you, thank you so much for joining the Wilmington family. We hope that you enjoy very, very long, happy careers here. We're thrilled to see you. Thank you for coming out tonight. Does there any comments from any of the committee members?
Welcome.
I think we all, we all welcome you. Thank you. All right, Paul, our next order of business, the FY nineteen draft budget calendar.
Thank you. Mr. Antonelli will be discussing the, believe it or not, FY nineteen budget calendar. We're still in the process of closing FY seventeen. We're working on FY eighteen, and we're getting ready to go into FY nineteen.
Okay. You all have the budget calendar in your package. I understand that it's very similar to last year's calendar. It outlines who's responsible for completing certain activities. It outlines target dates, and for example, I'll tell you that on October sixth, the budget materials will be sent to the leadership team by the central office, and then on the twenty-fifth, they'll return those budget materials to, to us, and then we'll start reviewing them with the leadership team. We have several meetings scheduled with the leadership team on November eighth and November ninth, and we will be presenting a preliminary budget to the school committee on December thirteenth. A month later, after the school committee deliberates on the budget and meets with the superintendent, then the superintendent will be recommending a, a budget to the school committee. That will be before January twenty-second, because that's the day that the town manager actually submits his budget to everyone. There will be a public hearing on February fourteenth, and after that public hearing, the school committee will vote on a budget, which will be discussed at later meetings with the finance committee, and on May fifth, it will be brought before the town meeting and hopefully be adopted at the town meeting. So that's our budget calendar. That's the first document for planning our budget to be distributed to the school committee, and I would recommend that the school committee vote to approve the budget calendar so that we can move forward with that.
Do we have any discussion? All right, I would entertain a motion. MJ, you move to adopt the budget calendar?
Oh yeah, make a motion. Pick it me, I'm sorry. Usually read my mind, Steve. Make a motion to accept the preliminary fiscal year nineteen budget development schedule.
Seconded by Peggy, thank you. All those in favor? All right, it's unanimous. Thank you, Frank.
You're welcome.
You have in front of you an FY seventeen revolving fund report. It says final, but I'll probably bring one more revision to you. I have some work to do on the circuit breaker as we get ready to complete and close our books for FY seventeen, so we're still in the process of that. But as you can see, all of our accounts are in the black as they should be, and even when I bring it back to you, it will be as well.
All right, discussion on the revolving funds? All right, we're not taking a vote on this, correct?
No.
It's just for informational?
Yes.
All right. That concludes our scheduled business. We now have a moment for public comments. Anybody has anything to remark on the agenda items that have been on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none. Move on to other reports. Anyone have subcommittee reports? Seeing none, we will move, yes, Peggy?
Could I just ask, I know we got the school committee handbook given to us, it's redone. Did we do any work on that, or is it just the one we had that has been updated as far as passing it out to us?
It was, it was updated, I think, the, the first few pages, especially with the, the change of people's titles and names and so forth.
It was the, it was just an update of committee members. It still had Leslie Quick and Kathleen Carroll on, the, the most recent one I had, I didn't have it up, I think it was just the first, first, that page and
Okay, but as a subcommittee, we never met and talked about it?
No, we, we
We didn't do the
Didn't? I'm sorry, was
Well, we have a subcommittee for the policy, so I didn't know, for the handbook?
Right, I just didn't
We never did it?
No, I, I just, I just asked, I was, we didn't change it other than updating the information. I didn't, I requested it from Tristan, but I didn't, I didn't think it had, I'm, my apologies if, I just thought that it was just simple housework.
Okay.
It wasn't, it wasn't any
I just think sometimes some things happen and we just don't communicate it enough to each other that, you know, we're gonna have this done, because being on the subcommittee is, it's, if we want to get together and look at other parts of it, I thought at some point we were gonna do that, so it's up to you.
No, no, we could still, no, absolutely, I just thought it was just housekeeping, nothing more than
Okay, I just didn't know why it was, because we didn't, we weren't told before that. So that's fine, another time we'll just know that we're gonna even have a meeting or we're gonna ask for something like that.
Okay.
And do it.
Okay, I just thought it was being helpful, it was all
That's all right.
So that everyone had everyone's contact information, simply that.
Yeah. Okay.
I have a question. Do we have to vote on changes to the school committee handbook or no?
Well, if any, if any policies, any of the, the body of the, of the handbook are changed, absolutely.
We vote on that?
Yeah. From what I understand, these are simply updates of the contact information.
Yeah, just in the administration, which is, I think, one of the reasons why Tristan has the file, so that when things do change, they could just, she could just update them and so that we could just put them into our handbook. That was all, I just, I thought it was, I just looked at it as simple housekeeping.
That's fine, if we, just to know in the future that, that's, that's okay, because I didn't know if I had missed a meeting or if we had talked about it or anything, and I didn't know what was changed in it.
I just, I would have told
And to be honest, I just didn't want to go through the other handbook and go through every page and see what, what we did. That's all, that's all I'm saying, so communication
My apologies.
Thank you. That's all right. Thank you.
All right. Move on to correspondence. I understand we have, we have several, several letters to
Yes, we have several. The first is being read at the teacher's request and response to online criticisms and inaccuracies, which have been posted on numerous social media sites. Okay, this is from Linda Spinazzola, Thursday, June fifteenth, to Mr. Welch, Mr. Rogero, Mr. Gallagher. Dear Kevin, Paul, and Sean, excuse me, C.C., Ms. Simmons, regarding Washington DC. Dear Kevin, Paul, and Sean, it is with a great deal of introspection that we would like to inform you of our decision to no longer volunteer our time in heading up the Washington, Washington DC field trip. This decision was not an easy one to make, especially in light of the fact that it is doubtful that another volunteer will step in to take our place. However, in light of recent events, we feel we have no choice. The, the eighth grade field trip has been a longstanding tradition in Wilmington for almost forty years. Ten years ago, ago, Joanne Benton approached us and asked us to coordinate a trip that would bring Wilmington back to Washington DC. We had never taken on an undertaking of that magnitude, and we were stymied with restrictions that made it difficult to get volunteers. However, after many hours of work, stress, and perseverance, we were able to pull off our maiden trip successfully. Since then, we have brought eight additional classes down to our nation's capital. All were successful trips in which students were able to make real-world connections to what they had learned in school. In addition, students also learned some real lessons on how to successfully navigate their lives independently, without the benefit of daily parental guidance, and successfully grow and learn from their experience. Each year, we averaged approximately 250 students per trip. This translates, translates to approximately 2,250 students that have taken advantage of the opportunity to visit Washington over that last nine years. For many students, this was a trip of a lifetime. The trip was accessible to all students regardless of ability or financial difficulty. In the past nine years, the trip has remained affordable, especially when compared to surrounding communities that have professional tour companies oversee their trips with identical itineraries. Our trip cost average $300 to $400 less than these communities, and our costs never rose more than $25 to $35 per year. Even while keeping this trip affordable, we were still able to afford financial aid to our family that demonstrated, to our families that demonstrated need. We streamlined our financial aid process to be as simple as a parent or guardian sending us an email. Each year, we provided 3,300 to 4,000, 36,000 over nine years in financial aid, making it possible for many students to attend despite financial issues. Students of varied physical and intellectual abilities have regularly attended this trip. Through careful planning and preparation, we have been able to accommodate students with a myriad of different abilities and accommodations. In conjunction with our nurses, we spent hours anticipating their needs and provided the necessary accommodations for them to have a safe and inclusive trip. Three years ago, we were able to bring a student with multiple physical handicaps to Washington DC, planning began a year before the trip date, and was a collaborative effort between teachers, parents, administration, and the tour company. At the trip's conclusion, not only did the student have an amazing experience, but the staff was profoundly proud and moved to have, and moved to have been able to be a part of her journey. Every year, the students amaze us at how interested, respectful, and mature they were while representing, representing Wilmington Middle School on this trip. Unfortunately, due to circumstances beyond our control, the pride and gratification derived from the trip is no longer enough to sustain it. Throughout the time that we have coordinated, throughout the time we have coordinated this trip, we spent countless hours preparing in addition to the actual time chaperoning. On average, we typically spend approximately 200 hours in preparation alone, for a total of 1,800 hours over the span of nine years. This year alone, we have had eight parent pre-meetings to determine how to best accommodate their particular child. All of this is done on, on our own time. We have given up prep time and classroom time to accommodate parent schedules. Chaperoning the trip also requires us to be away from our own families. Over the course of the trip, we have given up 44 days with our own families to provide this experience for the children of Wilmington. Despite how much time it has consumed, had, excuse me, despite how much time it has consumed, we always felt confident that the positives outweighed the negatives. Over the past few, few years, this feeling has been trending in the opposite direction. The sense we get from parents of light is that they are solely focused on their own particular child's needs, rather than the group as a whole. While we understand that everyone loves their children, their inability to see the big picture puts us into a no-win situation. We now are being confronted with an increasing barrage of parent complaints and criticisms delivered through a variety of avenues. We have been criticized through email, phone calls in the community, as well as on social media. This year, it finally seeped into our professional space. A Wilmington colleague decided to remove her child from the trip due to a soccer injury after tickets and rooms were reserved and paid for by our tour director. As this was April, they did not receive their non-refundable deposit back. Despite the fact that we tried to explain their deposit had already been spent securing tickets, hotel, et cetera, and that we do not get that money back, they still felt it necessary to call us a disgrace. The parent complaints have become abusive and unreasonable. No good deed goes unpunished. Compounding the parent issues that have worsened each year, we are seeing more and more students coming into eighth grade with very limited independent skills. This is not based on physical or intellectual abilities, but simply based on their lack of age-appropriate independence. This year alone, parents of students on field trips have called the middle school office looking for an aspirin for their child, or complaining that their child did not get a donut at the breakfast shop. During this year's trip, one of our nurses was verbally abused, abused on three separate occasions by the same parents due to something their child had done independently instead of asking their group chaperone, despite our nurse going above and beyond trying to rectify the child's mistake. Adolescents seem to be struggling now more than ever with emotional issues that cannot be reasonably supported on an overnight out-of-state trip. At the end of the day, student safety is our greatest concern, for as we know, the student coordinators and chaperones will be held ultimately responsible and face any repercussions resulting from this trip. In the end, it saddens us to discontinue volunteering. Throughout the years, we have seen this trip be a positive experience for so many children. We have witnessed tremendous growth and confidence in hundreds of students in just the few days we are away. We poured our hearts and souls into making the Washington DC trip a lifetime memory for the thousands of students that participated, and it saddens us to step away. However, the feeling of relief is the most prominent feeling we have at this time, relief that we will no longer endure the criticism and complaints from the overwhelmingly vocal minority of parents in this community. Respectfully, Missy Simmons and Linda Spinazola. The next correspondence I'd like to share is from Bill Fox Jr., which was sent to Mr. Welch, Mr. Rogero, and Mr. Gallagher on Friday, June 16th, 2017. Greetings, gentlemen. I'm forwarding you a note I sent to Lynda and Missy yesterday. I truly believe that these two teachers are the most outstanding advocates for their students that I've ever experienced in over 35 years of operating student tour programs. I do work with a lot of very motivated and dedicated educators from all around New England, who also work extremely hard to bring their students to Washington DC, New York, and other destinations. But when it comes to the Wilmington Middle School program, which I consider the best of all the trips I produce, Lynda and Missy have raised the bar above all others in terms of their hard work, dedication, and smarts. While I necessarily regret their decision, I applaud it because they both encountered so, so much frustration trying to achieve their objectives this year. I honestly detected a level of stress from them, both that I had never seen before. Not that every trip we've worked on has been a cakewalk and perfectly executed, but we always, we've always, we've always been able to overcome any obstacles to make this trip successful. Lynda and Missy are two of the most caring and compassionate educators I've encountered, always doing the best they can for their students. If you want a perfect example, let them tell you more about the young lady that we were able to accommodate three years ago. Just an amazing story. But given the frustrations that Lynda and Missy encountered this year, I completely understand their decision. Wilmington Middle School and your Wilmington Public School system are going to miss them, just like me. Thanks. Bill Fox, Fox Tours. And then lastly, excuse me. From a parent, September 2nd, 2017, Mr. Todd Flynn, wrote, "I am writing to express my disgust with the fact that the eighth grade field trip to Washington DC is being canceled. It is truly sad that an experience like this trip is being taken away because of, of a lack of staff participation. All we are ever told is how dedicated and committed to the students the staff of Wilmington Public Schools are." Obviously, this does not include the staff of the Wilmington Middle School. This is a trip that the eighth grade students have been talking about and looking forward to since they entered the middle school. It is an absolute shame that there is not one staff member who is willing to take on this responsibility, some of whom probably have great memories from their trip to Washington DC as eighth graders. Some have indicated this could possibly, possibly be the result of a contract dispute between the town and the teachers' union. If this is the case, I would ask that you please indicate this to the parents of the eighth grade students and forward any contact information you would have for the union leadership. The last few years have seen many negative headlines involving the Wilmington Public Schools. I firmly believe that all, excuse me, I firmly believe that of all the poor decisions that have been made by the Wilmington Public Schools, this is by far the one that will have the biggest negative impact on the students. These students are being robbed of the opportunity to make memories and grow as students and people. I have noticed over the last few years, there have been a number of students leaving the system for private schools. Prior to this decision, I could not understand why this was happening. Now, now it is clear to me there's a lack of commitment from the staff to ensure that the students get the experience they deserve, and the students who have gone before them received. Todd Flynn." And that's all this evening for the correspondence I've received.
Thank you, MJ. And I think we, we recognize that emotions are running high in this, on this topic. I will say that we've been speaking with Mr. Rogero, and I know Mr. Welch is looking at alternatives, and this is, this is not something that, that is not going to be addressed. We will have some clear answers and alternatives at our next public meeting. Manny?
I know that there's a lot of parents that have questions, they want to speak about it. Is this something that we put on the agenda at the next public meeting?
Yeah, I'd like that.
Because one of the, and I understand, you know, this, I have mixed feelings about this whole situation, because, first of all, I can't stand the fact that everyone's going on Facebook without any knowledge of what really happened. And, and we, we talk about this all the time, about social media. It's awful how people just put information out there that, that's not really the truth. At the same time, I have an eighth grader that is terribly upset that she's not going to take part of this, and so am I. So, there is, there's a whole, there's a whole piece of it here that, that, that's difficult for anyone to talk about, because there is a minority of parents, and there's a minority that, that cause these wonderful teachers to, to step away from what they're doing. But there's also a majority of parents and a majority of students that enjoy the trip and want to take part in the trip. So a lot of the parents do have questions of, where do we go next, and what can we do? So, those questions were not answered. And, and that's a lot, I got a lot of emails today, that they had gone to a, a meeting yesterday, and not a lot of the questions were answered. They left there were more questions than, than, than any, anything else. So, I would ask that if we are going to continue in this conversation, that we allow the parents to, to ask the questions and, and answer the questions that...
I, you know, I think that would be fine. I think that, that we will have, we'll have some, some real answers. And I think that if we accepted comments tonight, I think it would be premature, because we are, you know, we're looking into this.
Right, and I, and I agree. I don't think comments tonight is, is the right thing to do, because, first of all, it's not on the agenda, number one. And number two, it's, it just happened. But, but there are a lot of questions. Parents do have questions, and a lot of them are being misinformed. And unfortunately, we are getting some of these emails with misinformation, and we're seeing a lot of comments that are not necessarily the facts. So, I think it's fair to the community that, that we answer their questions.
I couldn't agree more. Any other discussion? Julie?
I was just going to say, and I, I truly appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Mullis. The social media has gotten out of control. There is so much misinformation out there. There are accusations being made at all different levels, which is, this is not who Wilmington is. This is not what we're about. And not for nothing, there's other things going on in the world that is a little bit more important than some of these issues that come up. I know this is important to us as a community, but there's some pretty horrible things happening in the world. There was a school shooting today. So, so some of these things, I kind of say, geez, this, is this what's important to us, and this, this is what's really concerning to us in this community? It's got to stop. It's really just got to stop. I am more than willing to hear people out and answer questions as I can, but stop with the online. Go to the person, go to the source, and ask your questions. If they're not resolved, let's bounce it up. Let's have a discussion face-to-face like adults. Because some of the comments that I've read, quite frankly, people sound like spoiled children.
Any further? Peggy?
Okay. I'll just, for disclosure, I'll just say that I have a daughter who's involved in this, because she's been a chaperone on, on, I think, the last two or three, at least two trips. But what bothers me now, even listening to this much of the conversation, and believe me, I've been living with this for quite a while now, as an administration, I, I truly feel that, that the comments at the end of that last letter, that are blaming the teachers, I think the teachers need to hear from our administration, that they've done the right thing all these years, they've done an excellent job. You've moved right on, we have moved right on, as if they did something wrong, to the parents wanting to know how to rectify it. They did nothing wrong. For nine years, they gave up their personal time. You have no idea, because I've lived through it, what they go through, and they don't, if they'd kill me for saying "go through." It's something they wanted to do, it was something powerful that they had done for the school, and it's totally, to me, unfair that you're moving right over this, of what these, these teachers have done. Do you know these teachers on their own have helped other kids who can, who do you think paid the money for them to go? We didn't, the school committee didn't send money for them, for these kids to go. It's those individual teachers have helped many kids get there with their own money, meaning the teachers owe money. They have been so giving and caring, and to even see any of this in Facebook is so upsetting to anybody who has, anyone who's had any involvement with it. It's just not fair. And so, I just want to say, I think that we need to send, as a school committee, as with the administration, thank you for everything you did. We are going to be moving on to find out if there's something else that will be done. But at this point, number one right now, tonight, should be, thank you. We want you to write a, we want you to do something to acknowledge what these teachers did. And then, the next time we meet and have the meeting with the parents, then we can move on from there. But to just gloss over it, like it, this was no big deal. It was a big deal. It was a huge thing that these teachers did, huge. And all of a sudden, they see, it's like they're the devil's advocates or something. It's not fair. So I am requesting that we, as a school committee, with the administration in fact, acknowledge what those teachers, Missy and Lynda, have done for this community. So I'd just like to put that out there.
I think that was well said, Peggy. It would be remiss if we didn't do that, I think personally. And I, I'm sure I don't see any objection. I think we owe them a great debt of gratitude, going all the way back to Bill Peabody and Ms. Frank Birmingham when I was in eighth grade. So, yeah, and I have children who are coming up, and I hate to see them miss out on it. So, we certainly, I think everybody in the committee understands the feelings that are going on out there, but it's a matter of harnessing, harnessing them in a positive way, and not resorting to name-calling, speculation, and inaccuracies on Facebook. Absolutely agree with you 100%. And we do owe all those teachers a great debt of gratitude.
And actually, anyone who is involved, the nurses, you know, you'd have no idea what the nurses have gone through the last couple of years in these things. It's incredible, working out programs with the parents so that they could be available for them. We have no idea. It's been, it's been incredible. So, I'm shaken, I'm so upset about this. But it's almost like, we're not supposed to get upset on their side. They have to put out a letter like that? Our own staff has put out a letter like they put out, doing that, because that's how frustrated they've gotten to that point. And they've given and given and never said a word, never, ever said a word, until this happened this year. And there's many reasons for it this year. And I, I'll just stand on record again as saying, it is a shame the way this town is using Facebook. It's a disgrace. And I'm happy to hear, as I go around to different meetings in town, there are other groups that have now stopped, stopped adding to the Facebook, and, and they're starting to even say, this is awful what Wilmington's doing, we can't believe this. We ought to be embarrassed. We've got to find a way. We're so much better than that. We're worth so much more than that as a community. And we have to stop it. And like somebody said in one of the lists, the silent majority, but that loud minority, it is the same people all the time, but we're always reacting, we're being reactive. We need to be proactive. And that's enough, I'm sorry. I don't mean to be lecturing. That's all. But thank you for wanting to do something.
Can I just, I'm going to sort of repeat something that I heard Mr. Welch say last night, but at the end of, my daughter's in sixth grade, and at the end of the open house, we were able to return to the auditorium for some closing remarks. And he did encourage parents to communicate as much as possible, introduce the assistant principals and the guidance counselors, and sort of pointed out, and talked a little about the chain of command, who to talk to, and how to, you know, get their, get answers to some of these questions that I sometimes think, it feels like, where, you know, I think we're doing so much better with transparency, but I think it's, it's hard. It was hard to read that letter. I mean, it's hard, I think, to hear some of, to know some of that. And I, but I think it's good for the community to know that. But he encouraged parents to, to reach But he encouraged parents to, to reach out, to ask questions. You know, we're very available to, you know, and that's always been my experience in the district, that I could get my questions answered. And then also encouraged parents to get involved in things like school advisory councils, and mentioned the PAC, and reminded parents that the principals at, at the PAC are always there. So it's another time for parents to share some of their concerns with the administrators. And so I feel like if, if you're frustrated and you need a place to communicate, there are so many avenues, and include, and school committee meetings and public comment. I think there are so many avenues for you to be heard and to get answers to your questions. And of course, reaching out to the school committee members as well. But I think they really made it clear, and I've, I've seen that at the open houses repeatedly. So I just wanted to revisit that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, you'll have somebody draft a, a letter of thanks? Thank you. All right. Future meeting dates, September 27th will be our next public session, followed by October 11th. I would be willing to entertain one final motion.
You're going to adjourn to public, to executive session?
Yep.
So I will make a motion for the Wilmington School Committee to adjourn to executive session under the exemption to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and/or litigation. And we will not return from that session.
All right, I have a motion. Second, all those in favor, I believe we need to do this roll call, correct?
Yeah.
Jen Bryson?
Jen Bryson, yes.
Julie?
Yes.
MJ? Manny?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And chairs, yes. And thank you very, very much for those of you who stuck with us. We hope you heard some positive things.